The true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. First item up on our agenda today is for public comment. We don't have any registered in advance. And if we had any public comment in the audience. I hear nothin'. Nothing on Zoom. Nothing. Okay. All right. We'll move on. Next, we have the nuisance update. This is Chief Morrison and Mr. Tarr.
Yeah, I'll keep my portion of it short. I know we have a lot going on tonight, but we have seven new nuisances written last week. Two new citations. I know one of those was in the 700 block, First Street Northwest. Made rounds late last week with Doug, and we have a lot of properties that we've kind of been working together with. And so we spent a lot of time on those ones last week. I did make rounds myself in Southwest, just to kind of follow up where the officers were at. And then we have a big push leading up to the citywide cleanup. We'll be sending out the flyers they're putting together. They're both in Spanish and English. And we'll attach those to all the nuisance letters that go out for the two weeks prior to that cleanup. And then we also have some yard waste ones going out now, but we're allowing them till April 5th, which is the opening weekend of the compost site. So that's what I have for tonight. Doug?
Thank you. Training fire tonight at 25 Sixth Street, Southwest. So when you leave here, if you want to see something new and improved, maybe you'll get to go see a house that got burned down and removed. And then we'll let that cool for a few days, and then staff will get in there to do the core out. We'll do that. We used to contract some of that out. I think this time with the equipment we have on hand, we're just going to try to do that in-house, save some money. And then we have a garage demo that was scheduled for last week as well. That'll go this week. Weather has been pinching us a little bit last couple of weeks. And of course, in any of the work we're trying to get accomplished this week, it looks like there's some rain in the forecast here and there, so we'll just see. You know, we just want to make sure everything's safe. Lantern Park Apartment Project continues. They're still going full steam ahead out there. And then the asbestos testing that we had had scheduled last week for 321 Fifth Street, Southwest, that had to be rescheduled. So I'm hoping they'll be here this week to knock that out, so we can get the report as soon as we can and just keep digging in on these. So other than that, any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Mr. Lamos?
Ron, Mike?
The engineer's still working on the plans and specs for the abatement, bid letting, so to speak. There was somebody from Terricon, which is the company putting together the plans and specs that was in there last week. They have to, as part of the plans and specs, they have to require that certain safety, you know, posts are supporting the beams that are questionable in there, and so working on the design of that, so.
Well, and they have the fire tonight. Will you have staff there in case they need something?
Yep, I sure do. I got one staff member in the unloader there to try to help stir and mix things, push things where they need to be, and then barricades and then fencing.
How about the status of 140th Street and Highway 65?
I know the contractor's out of town this week, so I'm hoping they get to it next week. I don't know. I did call, and he said he's going to be out of town this week, so.
You know, it's, how long's it been? Almost a year, and we've been waiting on it?
Yep, it's getting there.
When does the fine start in Actman?
It, I doubt we can make that stick, but.
How can we enforce anything then?
We can talk about it some other time.
Any other questions for Mr. Tarr or Chief Morrison? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, we got Rochelle Thompson with our fiscal year '24 audit report. Thank you.
This year, I issued the same opinion as last year. It's an unmodified opinion, and that's the best possible opinion that you can receive. On page five is the summary of the city as a whole. Includes all the governmental funds and the business type activity funds. And the city finished the year with governmental funds, cash balance of about 5.5 million, the business activity funds of 3.2 million, for a total cash of 8.7. The following page shows the detail of the major governmental funds. And the general fund finished the year with a balance of 1.8 million, which is a healthy balance. And if you compare that with the expenditures, you have approximately 11 months in reserve. That's a very good thing to have. All the funds showed positive growth, except for the ARPA fund, the grant. There's about 600,000 left in there to spend. At the end of June, there was.
It's spent. We spent it.
Then on page seven is the detail of the enterprise funds. Again, they're all very healthy funds, fund balances. And pages 18 through 19 are the notes to the financial statements. And those just detail the significant accounting policies and long-term debt detail, amortization schedules. I won't go through those unless anyone has questions on that. And on page 20 is a comparison of actual to budget. For the year ended June 30, '24, the city's receipts were slightly below budget, and expenditures were also below budget. So everything was in compliance. And then back on page 27 is a summary of receipts and dispersments by function for the last 10 years. And the city's revenue's been very constant over those years. And dispersments as well with an increase in '23. In '18, it looks like you paid off some debt or refinanced some debt, so that was a little bit higher there, but otherwise very consistent. And then towards the back of the report, on page 30 are the findings. There was one finding for internal control, and that's just due to a limited number of staff. And it's my reminder to council that the things that you guys do is very important by review the bills and approve and review reconciliations and ask questions. Those are all very helpful in maintaining segregation duties. It adds a layer of oversight. And then the statutory findings are on the last two pages. There were four statutory findings. It's down from last year. There were six last year. So nothing concerning. There's just a disclosure on related party transactions, item D. And then on the last page, there were three there. Overall, the audit went very well. The controls that are in place appear to be functioning. And all the info that I requested was readily available. The transactions tested were all properly supported. Overall, it was a very good audit. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Rochelle, Mr. Lamos?
Do you do audits for other towns? I just want to say it's nice to have someone here to audit us locally. That way, we can use our money locally.
I appreciate that as well. I do, I think, six cities.
All right. Any other questions for Rochelle?
I'm sure they don't go all as smoothly as ours do.
No, they don't. This isn't a very smooth audit.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an accountant, so, but when I look through the, you know, the findings and stuff, it looks like we're in pretty good shape. And that's always a good thing to see, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rochelle.
All right. Next up, we got the current Franklin County Excession Lead Grant Committee.
It's not a committee today. It's just me.
That's just perfect.
I have some handouts for you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You've already heard this a little bit. And then here's our report. You haven't seen the report just yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to leave a couple of reports over for that empty chair sooner or later, somebody's going to be there. They can read them when they get there.
Today, I'm just going to talk briefly about LEAP, and that is a grant that Franklin County got last year. Only six counties in Iowa received this grant: Cedar, Clinton, Crawford, Franklin, Muscatine, and Potawatomi. It is because this estimated adult obesity is 40 to 42% in our county. And so what this grant helps with is to do assessments in our county, just to see what are people eating? Are people getting out and doing physical activity, and how can we help with that? One of the assessments that we recently did was a walk audit. We, we went from downtown to the wellness center. And so we just, what we did in our audit was look at all the sidewalks, all the streets, all the safety, just to see what can we do in LEAP that can help this community. So part of our findings are that our bike trail is wonderful. It's beautiful in the fall. It looked so good. But on the way back, we went on the highway. And so that was not, not such a good part to go back on there. We found that a lot of, a lot of the route is missing sidewalks. And sidewalks are really, really important for people to get out and walk and go on walks. Our bike trail is wonderful, but it does lack some signage. If you're not from the area and you want to go on a walk, you might not know where it's at. Because even me, I've been in here for 10 years around this area. I didn't know how to get through the residential part. And so this walk audit report highlights all those good things and some things that can be worked on. There are some, there are some pictures in this report that shows some of our sidewalks. Some of them are cracked. Some of them lead nowhere. They're not connected to another sidewalk. And some of them are just, have a lot of leaves, have a lot of, you know, sticks. And so that makes it really hard for people to get out and walk and enjoy this beautiful town. Some of these counties have used these reports to apply for grants, and that is something that we hope to do in the future. We are conducting four more walk audits, which is around the school. We want to make sure that the kids can get safe to school. So there's going to be a team of us that are going to be walking around all four Hampton-Dumont schools. And we're going to be having a report like this. So hopefully, someone from the city, someone, someone out here is motivated to get a grant with this report. All this will be available to you guys in email form, in paper form, anything that you guys need. They can actually, Iowa State can actually go in and create reports specific for each grant. Do you guys have any questions?
I think that'd be great if we got some grant money, because it's one of the things that's overlooked. A lot of the sidewalks are in disrepair, and, you know, like you said, they lead to nowhere, or there's missing sections, or there's really no good path on Highway 3 to get to the hospital. So a lot of hoops to jump through, just to try and update our sidewalks. Thank you.
And this kind of work takes a long time, and it takes a lot of assessments, and it takes a lot of involvement from the university and people to help us. And so with this grant that we have for the next five years, we hope to keep doing assessments. Last year, we went to all the food pantries, and we did assessments at the food pantries to see what are people eating in our county. And something that we found is that people don't eat enough fruits and vegetables. And it is really hard for the pantries to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables. So one of our plans is to create a donation garden at the community garden. And so all of the things that we grow there, hopefully crossing our fingers that they grow, will go to all the food pantries. Last year, we were only able to donate green peppers because the deer got in and they ate the rest of our plants. But our community garden is at the St. Patrick's Catholic Church. And so there's a group of us that go over there, and we garden, and, you know, we try to grow as much as we can so we can give back to the food pantries. We're also working with Fairway. They're promoting some things. You guys have probably seen in the paper. We're promoting some things that they offer at Fairway, and we're working with the hospital, too.
I have a question. Do you have a list of possible grants that we could apply for?
Yes, I could get that.
That'd be great. Thanks.
And I'm not on my own. There's a group of nine members from different organizations, such as the hospital, the school. I think there's the auditors on our coalition, and they, the whole team just helps with different projects, getting different reports, different ideas. And so if anybody would like to join our coalition, we're always taking members. If anybody has anything that they might have questions or ideas about, we're always taking input from the community.
All right. All right. Mr. Paul?
I think that on the sidewalk situation, you know, with the economy up and down and this and that, people are really targeting where their money's going, and it may not be to a sidewalk. So a grant or a 50-50 match or something like that would really be, be helpful. And you're going to be vastly disappointed when you walk north of the high school on the sidewalks up there.
Yeah. We know that it takes a lot of money and a lot of grants. So I think that's why the university is helping so much with the reports that, that it takes to apply for the grants. It is, I have also some reports on sidewalks for you guys, if you'd like them. I can email them to the city, and they can get them to you. But it's just the importance of sidewalks and how it helps kids, how it helps families get out. Even though we may not have sidewalks wide enough, we can at least have a sidewalk, and that's really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. That's very helpful.
Excellent.
Lily, can you leave some of those for the public, maybe on that table back there? Thank you.
All right. Brings us to our next item, and that's to interview the candidates for the Ward 3 council vacances. I think Justin in the second row, if you could move back up here. That way, we know where you're at. So I just want to start, start off with this, just for, to welcome you guys. We appreciate the interest that we have in supporting our, in our city. We need people here to help us, and if we got an opening, we're definitely looking for somebody to help. Kind of, kind of just to give you an idea of how we're going to operate through this afternoon or this evening, because we got four of you to get, and we're going to start with just like a really quick bio-introduction of each one, each person, so that we can, so we know who you are. And after that, we'll entertain questions from the council members. We're looking at probably doing probably two rounds of questioning, just come around. And, and basically what's going to happen is, you know, we can give a question if it's specific to one, one candidate. Somebody just say something. Otherwise, we're going to accept, just let each, each one of you go to the podium and provide an answer for, answer for that. I won't start with the same person every time, so we'll try to, try to rotate that through so that everybody gets a fair shot. And then again, like I said, the podium, we're going to ask that each, when it's time for you to respond, please step to the podium so that we can hear well, and of course, our YouTubers can help us as, can hear as well. After two rounds of questions, we will, I'll ask if there's any clarifying questions from the council, maybe something that they want a little bit deeper dive on. And then from there, we'll give each, each one of you an opportunity to just make a closing statement. So starting with that, Bill, you're on, you're on the end, so. We'll let you guys just do a quick introduction, adduction up and let us know who you are.
First, I'd like to thank this, thank the city council and the mayor and the city manager for this opportunity. If selected to represent Ward 3 as our city council seat, I look forward to this opportunity. I've been a resident of Hampton for the past 25-plus years. I've been retired for the past four years. I've served 50 years in the workforce. Most of that time has been in the public service sector, as I work for the postal service. I have been married for over 50 years. I have two beautiful daughters, and they presented me with four grandchildren. My oldest grandson runs a business in Ankeny, and he's expecting his first child, so that'll be my first grandchild. So we feel totally blessed with that. I served in communities similar to the size of Hampton as their postmaster, some larger, some smaller, quite a few, actually. I enjoy many things, many activities, mostly being outdoors. Hiking, biking, canoeing, golfing, pickleball, pickleballing, yard work, and I love to read. As I said, I've been retired for over four years and living in Hampton for over 25 years. I've enjoyed all the opportunities that Hampton provides me. And I appreciate the fact that I read Councilman Davis's article in the paper the other day. And he asked us to step up. Without that challenge, I don't know if I'd be here right now, but I started to think. Retired four years. I've got most of my honeydew projects finished, and my children are grown, my grandchildren are grown. It's time for me to step up and give back to the community, so thank you for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you. To Bill.
Hello. I'm Justin Leath. I have not lived here for 50 years. I have lived here for only three years, five years in the area. But I've come from seven generations, family from here in Hampton and surrounding communities. Raised in the military abroad, and was provided the opportunity to see many countries, live in three. Graduated from Lincoln East High School in England, attended University of Nebraska, went up to Chicago, where I started my work in tech, and I worked in tech for about 20 years. Chicago, St. Louis, and then out in Silicon Valley for a few years with Tesla and a couple of other small startups. So after that, when COVID hit, I decided it's time to probably get out of the big cities and spend some time with the family and the grandparents. And, you know, that happened about five years ago, and ever since then, I've been here. And I've been trying to think of things that I can do and get involved. I have no children. I do not have any grandchildren coming. So I thought that giving back to the community in this manner would be appropriate. And I'm looking forward to your questions.
All right. Thank you, Justin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Crystal Wolvers. I live in Glendale Park in this community currently. But I have been a resident for most of my life. I was actually born at the hospital in town, one of the last ones. Graduated from here in 2004 and continued for about, I think about seven to 10 more years here, and then we moved away to Rockwell. But basically, been in the community my whole time. My parents were here. I was still here all the time. I have two small children, nine and six, which keep me pretty busy, but not too busy. Don't be, don't be worried. Not too busy. My husband works for the railroad, and he is gone a lot, so currently I am a stay-at-home mom. That's not, that hasn't been my life path my entire life. I actually worked in healthcare for 10 years until November. But this is what works best for us right now, and it also frees up a lot of time for being active in the community. And that's something I've always wanted to do, and just now I have that, I have that freedom to be able to do it. Other than that, yeah, I also look forward to your questions and.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeanne Fay, and like Justin, I've lived here for three years. I'm originally from Cedar Rapids, moved out to Colorado for about 38 years. Decided it was getting too crowded, too expensive to live out there, and started looking for places that I might want to live. And ended up back in Iowa. It was, one, Hampton was the most affordable place in the country to buy a house, which I think is a good selling point. Still is. And just the Iowa nice, it's still a thing. And I hadn't realized how much I missed that, being out in Colorado. Not that people in Colorado aren't nice. It's just not the same. It's not the same. You don't have the relationship with your neighbors out there that we had here. Growing up in Cedar Rapids, I knew all the neighbors. They knew me. They knew if us big girls were out because my parents left the front porch light on. So anyways, I would like to say I'm impressed and thankful that there are four of us that applied. I'm really thankful that our ward is that willing to be involved in this community. I think Hampton has a lot to offer. And, oh, I was going to go on about me, wasn't I? Let's see. What do you want to know? I work at the hospital. Most people know that. They know my face because I'm at registration, so I check everybody in. I have two kids, one in Colorado, still with two grandboys, my grandboys. And then my daughter Liz lives in Austin, Texas, and I'll be going to visit her next month. Got my measles booster, so I don't bring any measles back to Iowa with me. So anyways, I guess I'll find out more from my application, and any questions, yep?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, as we mentioned, we'll just do questions. We'll start over here with Mr. Lamos. And Bill, I might let you go twice and once, and then I'll give you a break here in a little bit. So if you'd step up, and Mr. Lamos, do you have a question?
I, I've sat in your spot, and sometimes I feel like it would be easier if we just drew names from a hat, because it's hard for us to pick and then have Ward 3 pick too eventually. But anyway, I, my question is, if you had an unlimited amount of money... But anyway, my question is, if you had an unlimited amount of money to use in Hampton, how would you use it?
An unlimited amount of money, that's something that's never crossed my mind.
As far as, as far as what you see for city use.
Well, I think that the city of Hampton is very successful in the opportunities that they allow the youth. Some of the communities that I've been in, one of the biggest complaints was that they were not focused on the youth of the community. And Hampton has so much going for it, through all of the parks, and the skateboard parks, the pickleballs, the pool, the theater, a lot going for the youth. I think my biggest thing that I would want to focus my money on is the promotion of Hampton and what we have to offer. Like I said, I've served in several different communities, I've lived in nine different homes and communities through the post office, and quite frankly, I didn't want to come to Hampton. I started off in Fort Dodge, and I was working my way south. My goal was Beaver Lake, Arkansas. And when I got into Atlantic, and my daughters got of age and got married within six months of each other, one moved to Lake Mills and the other moved to Clear Lake, and my wife told me, "We're moving, and we're moving north and not south." And Hampton came up, and I applied for it. I didn't know a lot about Hampton, and, you know, a person of my age still thinks, "Where do they want to retire?" And I'm always looking, it's so easy to say, "Homes for sale" in whatever community, and see what they, and see what the community has to offer. And to be, quite frankly, I am extremely hard-pressed to find a community that has much to offer, a family, and welcoming as a community as Hampton has been to us. So that desire to move has gone smaller and smaller, and since I retired, I thought, boy, when I retire, that direction south looks really promising. But as I settled down and relaxed in retirement, I realized it would be extremely hard to find some town to beat Hampton. Now, as far as the money goes, I would want to spread that word of what Hampton has to As a city council, we have to be very careful of what's said, because there's so many eyes on you, whether it's YouTube, whether it's a newspaper, whether it's a radio, whatever. And anytime something bad goes out, it's picked up by the media. And a good example is when Charles Grassley came to the town hall the other day. I didn't attend because I didn't, I wasn't available, but I watched it on YouTube, and I read about it in the paper, and I saw it on the newspaper. And I focused in as hard as I could on the people that I saw on the YouTube, the pictures, and I tried to zoom in, did I know anybody? Because curiosity, you know, who's making this promotion? And I saw very few people of Hampton there that I recognized, and very few people of Franklin County that I recognized. And like I said, I've been here 25 years, so I know quite a few people. And I've served the community for years as a postmaster. And I'm thinking, other people don't know that the people causing the raucous are not necessarily from Hampton or representative of Franklin County. And that left such a negative impression of our community and our county, it just about turned my stomach. I thought, this isn't Hampton, this isn't Franklin County, and it doesn't matter what your political affiliation is. I don't care who it is, if they're a guest in our community, they need to be treated with respect, especially by the people of Hampton. And Mayor, as long as I'm up here, I'll ask you, I think you really should draft something up and go to the media with it, and let them know that this is not what Hampton or Franklin County represents. It painted a very dark picture of us. And the money, like you said, if I had that unlimited amount of money, I'd spend it on promoting Hampton as much as I could to welcome people and to show them what Hampton has to offer. So that's what I would do with the money.
All right. Thank you. Jason, Justin?
Same question, or?
Same question.
Same question, unlimited amount of money. Okay. I think, I love that, I think that's great with advertising for Hampton, but I would gear it towards young families. I think that so much of our aging population is not replaced by young couples that are just starting to have children. I think that you would have to make policies that would encourage that and for those families to stay here and to grow here. So whether it is, you know, increase your technology, your broadband, which looks like the city is, or other projects as well. Unlimited amount of money, I would put it in a second golf course. That's what I would do. So, that as well, if it was unlimited, Barry. But again, youth programs, advertising for the community is a great way of bringing fresh blood and talent in, and then maybe also doing something to bring another business or two back. So, another larger factory, bring the jobs back, so.
All right. Perfect.
That's it.
Crystal?
Unlimited amount of money, it's an odd concept these days. I guess one thing I would do, as a mom of two small children, I feel like even though we do have a lot of parks in our community, they could use a little bit of revamping and maybe just more, more parks. Something I love to do with my children is, as soon as spring hits, we like to get on the bikes and we like to go. We like to either do picnics or do things of that nature. I just think more parks would be great, more places to do things as a family like that. Also, our roads. I think that sometimes, like, you know, there's infrastructure that needs to be fixed and replaced, too. I think if there was an unlimited amount of money, something that I would like to fix in this community specifically would be roads. Let's redo them all. Let's, no more potholes, no more tire issues. But other than that, yeah, really focus on family.
All right. Thank you. Jean?
I think one of the first things that people notice when they come to Hampton, when they get within the downtown area, is our beautiful courthouse and our more thriving downtown. It's definitely improved since I moved here, so that's encouraging to see. But as you continue to drive around that area, you can't help but see the homes that are shuttered, condemned, you know. So if I had unlimited amount of money, I would say, get rid of all of those first thing, because those bring down the overall perception that people have of Hampton. And then, like Crystal said, you know, get some of those roads fixed, too. You know, obviously, we're a small town, we have limited budget available for that kind of stuff. We have to, you know, do it a bit at a time, and that's definitely understandable. But with unlimited funds, that's a different story. And then, like Lilly was talking about, the walk, in other larger towns, they call it a walkability score, where, you know, half having more sidewalks, the sidewalks being in better condition, all that kind of stuff, being able to get to places in town that you need to go by walking. All of this combines into what Zillow, I noticed it on Zillow, has a walkability score for any town that you look up a house in. And I'd like to see the walkability score for Hampton improve and get some of those sidewalks repaired and replaced or put in and not have the bridge nowhere. In fact, I've got one right at the end of my driveway, right at the end of my property, so it just stops there. So, those would be the main things. I think we've got good parks, you know, some upgrading of equipment would be great. My grandsons, when they came to visit me after I moved out here, they loved the zip line park, as they call it, Harriman Park. The weather didn't cooperate, so we didn't get over to progress, but, so, doing that kind of stuff, and like Crystal said, I mean, I think we all mentioned, you know, just doing stuff to attract families to come to Hampton, because that's how this town is going to grow and continue to exist. We need to bring more young people in.
All right. Thank you. Move over to Mr. Davies.
Okay. Let's just assume, pardon?
I'll start with Justin on this one.
Okay. Okay, well, assume there's an issue, don't necessarily have to name one in particular, but there's an issue, and you've done your research on the issue, and you feel that you're going to vote a certain way. However, your constituents feel the opposite of you. Like, if you would want to vote yes, but let's say most of the people you talk to want to vote no, what would you do?
I would vote no. I would vote no. You're representing your constituency, and if the majority, it's not very hard in a ward, what is there, 1,000 people? So if you get 800 of them that say, "We vote no on that," you absolutely vote no.
Okay. All right. Crystal?
I would tend to agree with that, unless my research has really proven something that maybe others are not seeing in that respect, I would try to educate as much as I could. If they're still seeing it a different way, maybe I'm wrong, and maybe we would vote no. It just kind of depends. I think everything is communication and open, should be open communication. And one of the main things that you do as a city council woman or member, man, is to represent your constituents, to represent your ward. Have that open communication as much as you possibly can. So essentially, maybe no, but let's look into it, let's, you know, let's talk about it, let's openly communicate.
All right. Thank you. Jean?
I'm all about communication and education, so I would want to have a discussion with people, find out, well, why do you think, why do you feel this way? You know, what is it that makes you so passionate about this? Help me to understand. And then I would be willing to share, okay, this is what I've researched, this is what I've found out, and, but, like they've said already, if it came down to a matter of my opinion versus the people of my ward, I would vote the people of the ward.
All right. Bill?
I like this order better. If we could stick with it, that would be great. That's a really tough situation to be in, and I've been into those situations before with the postal service, when I've had customers that come to me with an issue and they expect to answer that's, the answer that they want to hear. And you can't always do that. And I know that I would be representing the people of the Ward Three and their wishes. But representing them to the best of my ability doesn't, doesn't always mean agreeing with them. And if I had the knowledge and the background and the research to back up my opinion, and I've communicated to that, those, to those people, to my constituents on Ward Three, I think that I'm more of a, at this stage in my life, I'm a man of principle, and if I truly believe that what I'm doing is the right thing to do for the people of the Ward Three and the city of Hampton, even if it were against their wishes, I think I would stick with my principles and pray that history would bail me out on my decision. So I guess that's what I'd do.
All right. Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask one question for you guys. I would, I would just, really simple, how would you describe your leadership style? And we'll start with Crystal.
I think I lead with compassion. It's not as if, working 10 years in healthcare, I wasn't, I wouldn't say in charge of people, but in a leadership position at Mercy. And what I always chose to do was lead with compassion, and that means having open communication. That means being able to work together to meet an end goal. Also, of course, I'm drawing a blank. If I don't know the answer to something, I have no problem asking the correct people to get to that answer. And I also lead in that manner, too. So if someone else on the team has that answer, or if you don't, I would be more than willing to go and find that answer for you, too. So essentially, open communication, let's all work together, is kind of how I lead. You don't need to be one chief to a bunch of Indians, you know, you have, everybody can be a chief, lift everybody up, so.
All right. Thank you. Jeanie? Jean, I'm sorry. I don't know.
I answered either.
Okay. Good.
Apparently, Crystal and I are more alike than we thought. Similarly to Crystal, I would say, well, like I've said, I'm big on communication, education, bringing people together to get something done. I'm definitely very much a, "Let's get her done" kind of person, and I can have a tendency to be a little bit of a workaholic because of that, because I want to get her done and not stop until I do. So, but yeah, leading with compassion also, you know, realizing life happens, and you have to keep that, take that into consideration with everybody at all times.
All right. Thank you. No, I'll see, Bill gets to go next.
Well, in, in my experience, I've always led by example. I would never ask anybody, any employee that I've ever had, I've never asked them to do something that I was not willing to do myself. And if they needed help, I was more than willing to, them to give them a hand and demonstrate the issue. It's worked successfully for many, many years. I don't want to be anybody's boss. In fact, I play pickleball with some rural carriers, retired rural carriers from my Sheffield office, and one of them continually, every time I see him, he says, "Hi, boss," and I just cringe, because he knows that word I never liked was "boss." I never wanted to be the boss, I wanted to be the coworker and to help get that task accomplished, whatever it was, so.
All right. Thank you. Justin?
Leadership style, many inputs, industry professionals, those that know the topic or issue at hand, and getting their information, putting all the facts together, and then, you know, having the right people in place to make those decisions. It's a team effort, not one person can know everything, so you need to pull facts from specialists and get their opinions.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hodge, do you have a question for the group?
Well, I thank all four of you. I think you're all probably very well-qualified. There are some things I'd like to say, but I'm not going to. I really don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Move on to Ms. Creepy.
Well, I'm going to date myself here. Crystal, I think I probably was your mother's nurse in labor. Means you were the one of the last babies out there.
I was one of the last ones, that's what I heard. It's one of the last ones. It's like, really.
Well, my question is, we do have a big bond issue coming up that we have been talking about. We want to stabilize Rick's pharmacy, stabilize it versus tearing it down. I want to know what your thoughts are on that issue.
All right. See where we're, well, go ahead with Jean.
I think it's fabulous. One, we don't need another Peace Plaza, it's great. We had- I think it's fabulous. One, we don't need another Peace Plaza. It's great. We had a similar spot in my hometown back in Colorado that grew in its utilization, let's say. Initially, it was a nice little spot with some benches and, and a fountain that didn't run and, and nobody ever used it. But we figured out ways over the years to use, utilize the space. And so that was a good thing. But as far as the pharmacy buildings, I, I don't like seeing empty buildings downtown. That doesn't look good for a thriving downtown, which ours is definitely moving in that direction. I'm big on restoration. I think that we have these beautiful buildings downtown and that is a huge draw for the rural communities in Iowa. That's part of the reason people go to those communities to visit is because of those gorgeous old buildings and they want to see what it looks like inside and all that. I think it's a best use of space to renovate rather than to tear down and then try and figure out what we do now. Granted, it's going to take some time and it's going to take some money. And not everybody is going to agree. But I, I think it's a great idea. I love it.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, I think the decision to have that bond issue to save that section of the downtown was a very bold move made by the city council. I too agree that we have a beautiful downtown space with the centerpiece to be our crown jewel of the courthouse. And without those buildings, it would create such a hole. It would be a real eyesore. When you look at the historic pictures of Hampton and you see the beautiful downtown and you see that it's still standing today, means a great deal. But I guess I would challenge the city council, I think, you know, you've made the bold move to save it and to spend the money. Now what? I think you need to focus now on how are we going to get a return on that investment because that's a large investment. And I don't know what that, I don't know what that would be. And I don't know what thought processes have been put into the use of that portion of the city square once it's completed. That was a decision that I would have agreed with to the bond issue and to the renovation of the property. But I think I'd be losing a lot of sleep trying to fill how we're going to fill that space and get our money back. Because even though it's the city's money, it's the taxpayers' money and they need a return on this investment. And so I, I hope some of you are losing sleep over that because I know I'm even losing sleep over it. Because if I'm on that seat, somebody's going to come to me and say, now what? So, good luck with that.
Mr. Greif, Justin?
I agree. I think that having empty spaces, empty buildings downtown is not very attractive at all. This sounds like a Band-Aid. It sounds like you're saving something. That needs to be saved. That everybody loves and appreciates, absolutely. But you need to have another plan that goes beyond that to attract more businesses here into the community. So besides the bond, there needs to be more that comes with this that attracts more companies, more organizations, more shops here back to Hampton.
All right. Crystal?
I'm going to go ahead and agree with the consensus. Happy you're saving the building. In high school, I worked at the pharmacy and it was right around the same time as the fire happened downtown. And honestly, like, I think that fire was, is oddly devastating to me as a community member, even at eighteen years old. Just because I had looked and lived in this community my entire life and saw like what our downtown was. And honestly, had an odd sense of pride about our downtown, even as a child, like a young, I loved walking downtown. I always walked to school and things. So I do agree with the fact that we did save it because unfortunately, I mean, that hole that that fire left in the downtown, though it has been utilized in some way. I walk a lot during the summer and spring and I rarely see anyone using the, the Peace Plaza. So I agree in the respect that something needed to be done. I also agree, what are we going to do? I know that it's going to be two office spaces, I believe, was kind of the goal, or what I've heard from coming to council meetings, that is kind of the goal, is to have two office spaces there. Yes, no, don't know. But what are they going to be? Are they going to be shops? We could really use an ice cream shop in this town. I don't know if you're aware. I love sweet treats. But just things of that nature, like how are we going to get back to having a thriving downtown? Not that it's not thriving right now, it is on its way, well on its way, but we're going to have two open spaces now. What can we get in there? Block 10 is amazing. I would love to see something like that in our community. So, just food for thought.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
All right. No pressure, but you realize that Jim and I are both in your ward. So, hey, you're voting for us too. So, just no pressure. In the last three weeks or so since the resignation of our Ward Three councilperson, I'm sure you've had a few people share with you their ideas. Or if you've gone out to solicit, or have just been at work and someone says, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? What are, what's one of the biggest concerns that people have shared with you about what they would like to see as you on the city council? I don't know who we're starting with.
We're going with Bill. We're back to Bill.
Bill's starting off.
Well, to be perfectly honest, councilman, I haven't spoke to too many people about this, about my decision to join. In fact, I wanted to wait till the very last minute to give it to Becky, my application. I chewed on this for quite a while. Because I didn't know how much of that feedback I wanted to get at this point. It's easy to go out there and look for feedback, but when you, when you knock on the doors, a lot of the feedback that you get is negative feedback. And me in the post office, you can imagine how much negative feedback I've gotten over the years. And it's just kind of a waste of time. If you don't get, if it's not positive, I really don't care to hear it. In fact, you know, I'm guilty, I'm guilty myself. I see something on Facebook and all of a sudden, negative, and then, but I'm trying to get away from that. And it's hard, it's hard not to be that way. Not that I don't care what the people have. I know, let me give you an example. When I first came to Hampton as postmaster, okay, I'd walked into the City of Hampton, I'd introduce myself and I'd say, I'm your new postmaster, Bill Holmstrom. And I am not kidding you, for the next thirty to forty minutes, I couldn't leave that person because of the negative, 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 negative. That's all I got. So it got to the point where, when I introduced myself, my name is Bill Holmstrom and I go to Trinity Lutheran Church and I have two daughters and they're getting married and I've got grandchildren and the subject of me being the postmaster, I, I did not bring up. Okay? And this is when I first met these people. And after working ten to eleven years, I'm not exactly sure how long, I'm sure about eleven years, when I left and I met people and I introduced myself, I'm your retired postmaster at that point, because I've worked with those people, they knew who I was, they knew that what I accomplished and what I didn't accomplish was going to rest on my shoulders. And so at that point, I wanted their opinions. But just to go in there dry, I didn't, I didn't want to hear the, hear all of the opinions. And I have nothing to control over and nothing to do with. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Justin?
So, I don't think a lot of citizens know the difference between city responsibility and county responsibility. So they think they're complaining about something that the city does, but it's actually the county. And some of that has to do with the plowing of snow. So that's what I would hear most about is, if I was honest, maybe the plowing of the streets. They don't know when it gets plowed and when it doesn't. I don't, I don't think there's any, I mean, besides the regular changes, I don't think there's any big changes that the community has really talked about, or with me anyway. But yeah, that was it. That was just.
All right. Thank you. Crystal?
So I actually did go door to door in Ward Three. I did not do it this last weekend, whether, I did it the weekend before. And honestly, to touch on the negative, a lot of positive. So, a few things I heard, in some ways, some comments that were made a few, I think it was about a month ago at this point, that's still a hot topic issue. I'm not going to go into it more than that, not the time or the place. But that is still a concern. Other than that, their concern is really centric to our location, East Park. Quite a few people have some issues with East Park. Not that we don't love it, just some of the maintenance of it. There's a, and I actually walked down after, because I heard this from many people in Glendale Park when I walked around, and, and in Windsor too, honestly, because we share that park. Well, share with the whole community. But we are most centrally located to it. I did walk down and there is a chunk of sidewalk that is kind of uneven and kind of in like slight disrepair. It was replaced at some point recently. I'm not going to name names on who was telling me this. I could, but you know, it was replaced. Other than that, there, the wood bridge is out in the back. People are very concerned about the, it's not in the best shape. So, and then there's overgrowth and things like that. But anyway, East Park, hot topic. Other than that, you know, you have your common nuisances and things of that nature too. But really, for the most part, I walked around for two days essentially and did quite a few hours doing that. And really, it was an extreme amount of positive. Just you have your here and there nuisances. And I do think part of like being a councilperson or a duly elected official is to go around and actually hear those concerns and actually be able to be there. Because I know as a mom, and I know that I'm not going to rest on that the whole time, but sometimes life happens and you're not necessarily able to come to these meetings of that nature. And it's nice to have somebody out there that is able to hear your concerns and be able to be a voice for that. And I do think that's part of what being a councilman is. And it's kind of somewhat lost a little bit. But I do think that's an important part of it. And that's where I'd like to be.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jean, you're up.
Well, like Bill, I hadn't told a lot of people that I was going to apply and kind of waited till the last minute. I like to research things and, and really think it through. I do a lot of pros and cons lists, that kind of thing, before I make a decision on something. So there's really only a few people in town that knew in advance that I was going to apply. I honestly had really hoped that we would have some folks from our Hispanic community apply. Because, you know, for nearly thirty percent of our population is from those folks, I think they need representation on the council. That didn't happen. So we'll move on. But, but other than that, I mean, you know, it's the nitpicky things. It's the, the plowing of the streets. My street, I live down the street from Ron. I get plowed really well. I don't know if that's because I live down the street from Ron. Some people seem to think that. I don't know, but you know.
Well, don't name names.
Right. But, you know, I, I would always answer those folks, oh, that's nothing, when they'd complain about the snow plowing not happening fast enough. You know, in Colorado, they don't even go down the side streets unless there's a foot of snow. A foot of snow, not two inches, a foot. So that generally calms people down. So, yeah, I mean, for the most part, I think people feel like we're doing okay. The council's doing okay. So.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. That takes our, takes us through one time. So we'll let everybody have another shot at you. If you don't have a question, that's great too. That doesn't matter. So we'll just start over here with Mr. Lamos again.
Small America has lost so many businesses because of Amazon and, you know, their convenience. If you go out of town to buy or purchase something, could it be purchased here? Or are you just going out of town to, because maybe we don't have it here?
Justin, you're up. You're up. By my count, you're up.
So, yeah, local businesses now competing against the global market obviously is an issue. I think to my whole theme, and what I would like to do is focus, if, if selected, is focus on engagement with the citizenry. I think getting everybody out, getting them involved, getting everybody on the streets for an event or two, or, you know, one day of trash pickup. People got to get back out of their houses again and talking to people. So then, when somebody has, you know, an item for sale that's a dollar more expensive and it's local, they'll buy that instead of the two dollars, something that's two dollars cheaper on Amazon and deliver it to their door. It's about making the connections with the community and, you know, supporting the community. That's how I feel about that. Does that answer your question, Mary?
Thank you. Thank you.
Crystal?
I'm kind of everywhere with this. So I do most of my grocery shopping local, Fairway, Dollar Fresh, which, I mean, Dollar Fresh isn't necessarily local, but do most of that. But I am a parent and my kids love snacks. So we do go to Sam's Club once every two months. Other than that, I mean, Brit's Boutique has some very wonderful clothing items. In fact, one of, at least one of the things I'm wearing right now is from there. So I do there, I do shop there. I think part of it is, we need a little bit more business in this town. Like, we go to Ace Hardware and we get things there, right? But we don't have everything you could possibly ever want in this community. And how would you, really? I like to shop as local as I possibly can. If it makes sense physically. Or really of convenience. Because sometimes I'm just, you know, life happens and you can be a bit of a poor planner and you don't know that you need this thing right now. Hey, look, we're at Ace Hardware. We need it. So it kind of hit and miss. It kind of goes both ways, I guess would be my answer to you. I try my best to shop as locally as I possibly can, but sometimes you can't. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Jean?
Hey, I live close. I can't say what it's on.
Yeah, I'd like to see more be available in Hampton for shopping. I do both, a combination of both, honestly. Some things, like I had to put my dog on this specialty food because he decided he was allergic to chicken and I can't find it anywhere around here. So I ordered off of Amazon. It gets delivered to my front door. Sometimes I'll throw, since I'm ordering anyways, off of Amazon, I'll throw in something that I know I need, that I probably could get locally. I prefer to shop locally. I will run all over town, going to different places because I really like to milk at Quick Star better than anyplace else. But I need to go across the street and get stuff at Fairway too. And so, I'm that kind of shopper. I'm in Jerry's shop all the time. Looking for things I don't need. But, yeah, I would love to see more variety, more for people to choose from. So that they don't feel the need to have to go out of town to get what they need, to get what they're looking for. Unfortunately for women, that means clothing stores. Unfortunately for women, that means clothing stores. You've got to have more than one or two places in town that you can get clothing, so.
All right. Thank you. Bill?
Well, I'm not sure how to describe this. I know that with one of my daughters and their family in Lake Mills and the other in Clear Lake, we're making that commute to Clear Lake and, and Lake Mills, we did it quite often for all of the athletic events that we went to, it was like every other night, it seemed like we were traveling to some sort of a ballgame, or a concert, or a dance recital. And we're passing through Mason City, and it's like, well, I need this, or I need that. And it was awfully convenient and awful easy. In fact, when that new Amazon store went up in the corner of Mason City, in 65 and, I don't know what the east-west road is right there, but anyway, I told my wife, I said, if I lived in Mason City, I'd probably go and work at this Amazon shop, especially with my background in the post office. And I went to the Doherty St. Patty's Day Soup Festival the other day, and I talked to a ex-rural carrier substitute who actually works there. And I couldn't believe the stories he was telling me about this Amazon place, and how he wasn't sure how to communicate, because there were so many people there that did not speak English. He didn't know how the supervisors were explaining how to make the deliveries. And he said the hours that they were getting were sparse, a few hours here and a few hours there. And I told him about my experiences here in Hampton, since they've started that facility, and I saw the new vans driving around town, how I saw, well, actually, one, one of the gals driving one of the vans was completely lost in the city. She didn't know where she was, she was looking for directions, she was trying to find the entrances to the buildings. And then I walked out the other day, and there's an Amazon package at the end of my elderly neighbor's driveway, at the very end, right next to the street, was a larger package, and I thought, oh my gosh, who's, who's going to want Amazon delivering those kind of packages, and people that are getting lost? And I, I think this, this Amazon thing, I know we're kind of in the middle of it, but it might be kind of fazy. I think when a person wants to go shopping, and they want to come shopping downtown, they want, not just to do their business and pick up their packages and go home, they want a shopping experience. They, they want to really enjoy themselves. And I know when my wife goes downtown, she has that shopping experience. I don't know what it is, but she goes down there, she was down there at the corner store, came home raving about the clothes and stuff that they had. I haven't found that experience, shopping downtown. I know when I go in the businesses, I look around, and I'm probably the only guy standing there. And when you're an old guy, you can get away with it, but I can see why a lot of the young guys don't want to go in those shops, and they're just the only guy, and the women are sitting there, and their wives are thinking, well, maybe it's time to go home, because you're not enjoying yourself. We need to improve the experience for the male shoppers, if they want them to go down there and shop. We can always use new businesses, and hopefully we can attract them with some of the renovations down there. But Chambers got their work cut out for them. Hampton's a beautiful city, there's no reason not to shop here, unless you just absolutely can't find what you need. The thing that upsets me the most is buying my gasoline here in Hampton, when I can go 30 miles north and get it 30 cents cheaper. I've never figured that one out, and that drives me that way sometimes. And I think, well, why not drive there? Buy my gas up there, and I still may get home, and I'm saving money. So, anyway, we need to improve our shopping experience for guys.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Davies, you have another question?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Well, you hit on most of mine, but I did have one that I'd like to get your, your input on them, and it's, how do you, how do you stay informed about city information, city council, issues from town, from the town, or through the government? So we'll show over to Crystal.
Well, I've actually recently been coming to more city council meetings, so that's been really the best way to get the information, hot from the source. Otherwise, I'm a plug Jennifer, she does a great job for the Hampton Chronicle. And a lot of people that cannot make it to these meetings know what is actively going on. Pat Palmer, another plug, always very good on his Facebook page for the council, or his councilman, Pat Palmer page, has everything that was typically discussed, or at least the minutes from what was discussed. So, I don't think it's that difficult to know what's going on in your community, but the best way is to just come, because then you just know, but, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Jean? What she said.
I agree.
Ditto.
Ditto. Yeah, I mean, same thing. You know, I've recently started coming to more of the meetings, I always check Facebook for both the City of Hampton page for the minutes. I tried getting on the YouTube thing one day, and there was no sound.
One time. One time.
So, yeah, I figured it was a little off. Jennifer, again, is awesome about keeping us updated through the Chronicle, so those are the main avenues that I have as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anything different?
No, not really. I want, again, to commend the Hampton Chronicle, I'm reading the paper again, there was a period there where I wasn't, but in the last year or so, it's changed quite a little bit, and I really appreciate the news a lot more. One of the first things I read is the front page, and then I look for the city council report. I've recently discovered the YouTube channel for the city council, and I kind of appreciate that too, it's an easy watch. You don't want to watch commercials on television, you can watch the city council while the commercials are going on. I think you guys need to smile more, and that's hard to do, because I'm not really a big smiler either, but you guys are being viewed as representing Hampton, so let's show some enthusiasm out there. Other than that, that's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Justin?
I, it's usually the paper or the radio station, actually, traditional mediums, so it's great that they're staying alive around here, but those two sources.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Hodges, I'm sure you don't have any more questions. Ms. Greifey, did you have another one?
I do, but first I want to tell Bill, don't you come in my shop sometime, I'll visit you like you wouldn't believe. People can't get out the door. My question is, what inspired you, or motivated you, to fill out an application for city hall, for city council?
Go ahead.
I think that there's a lot of armchair politicians, and a lot of Facebook political analysts, and I decided that the only way, I feel like that's really close, the only way to actually have any change is to be the change. And that was truly what motivated me. Another Hampton Chronicle, you can go on there as well, and you can see a lot of negative things if you want to. Unpositive as well, but a lot of negative things too. And I just think, people have a lot of complaints, and they just want to source those through Facebook, and hope, you know, da-da-da-da-da-da, I sent it, it's going to change. No, it's not. You know, you have to actually be willing to put yourself out there, you have to be willing to engage with your community, you just be willing to be part of that movement, you know? You can say whatever you want to on Facebook, you can say whatever you want to on the Hampton Chronicle page, you can say whatever you want to, anywhere really, but the four of us decided to be here, the four of us decided to show up. And I too am impressed and so happy that there's four of us, because that lets me know that there's people in this community that do want the same things that I do. And I wondered that, so.
All right. Thank you. Hey, Jean?
For me, I think it boiled down to hope for the future. I think we're, we've got some really good things going on in Hampton, I'd like to see that continue, I'd like to be involved in that, like Crystal said, being the change. I used to always say that if I had my pick of any job I could possibly do, if I were independently wealthy and could do anything I wanted to do, it would be to be a professional volunteer. So far, I haven't found my niche yet in Hampton since I moved here, so I'm still looking for that niche, but, you know, I just see so many good things going on in Hampton, and just wanting to be part of that.
All right. Thank you. Bill?
Getting your, getting your setups in.
I could use that, I could use much more of that. I guess I'd have to thank Councilman Davis for the challenge he presented in the paper, that's why I wanted to do this. He asked us to step up, and I know throughout my life, there's many times, I think, someday, someday I'm going to do this, someday I'm going to participate, someday I'm going to make a difference, and this is someday for me. It's time to get involved. Hampton's looking more and more like this is going to be my final home, my final move, and I want to contribute what I can with the time left I still have, so. I thank Jim for the challenge, and wish you well in your selection, you've got good candidates here, and I too think this is great, that there's four of us here, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Justin?
I actually see it as a privilege. This is the greatest experiment the world has ever seen, and why wouldn't you take this opportunity? We, you know, were born in this country, and, you know, lucky enough to have that, you know, why not step up and serve, you know? Back in the day, you know, preachers and farmers and businessmen used to go serve, then go back to their fields, their businesses, and their churches, so just wanted to participate for a little while.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
With Doge being the big game in government these days, both at the federal and state level, from your perspective, what's one thing you would like to see looked at or trimmed back on our local government?
Start with Jean. I think that question makes everybody ask stuffs.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm all, all about efficiency. I love the, oh, she's not here. Rochelle's audit report, I was married to a CPA for years, so it actually made sense to me when she was going over the stuff. And it was impressive, I thought it was very impressive. I'm always impressed with Ron, he seems to really know his stuff, his ordinances and everything, and I don't feel like we, I mean, I guess, maybe in terms of efficiency, if the budget allowed for it, maybe some more law enforcement. I worry that they get stretched too thin, I guess. But, gosh, I just can't think of anything else, really.
All right. Thank you. Bill?
Well, I think I like Barry's question more about all the more money that I have that I can spend without worrying about it, rather than this one. I'm listening to the report that we received this morning, this evening about the audit, it sounds like the Hampton City Council and the city has a pretty good handle on the physical responsibilities of Hampton, and they're managing their money well. I don't know, we talk about the $700,000 bond for the buildings downtown, I believe it was 700,000. I guess if I was going to look into anything, and Ron, I'd come to your desk, and I'd, I'd ask you, how many of those bonds do we have outstanding at this current moment? I have no idea. And I think I read somewhere that you can spend up to 5% of the total taxation value on bonds or something for the city, and don't quote me, because I don't know, you guys got too many ordinances, like, kind of like 170-some, there's, there's a lot of them. But anyway, there's so much that I don't know about the city, but that would be one of my questions. How strapped are we? And how flexible are we? And how far do we want to push ourselves? So, and, and all I have is questions, I have no answers, so. I'll be bothering you a lot if I'm selected.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you. Justin?
I know Elon talked about a mine, or a lime, lime mine, a lime shop mine, where he kept retirements, and I don't think Hampton has any of that, but I think that if we focused on getting away from hard copies and paperwork, and going to more to technology-based applications, and having the public pay through the internet for any service, I think, which mostly they can maybe, but I think that would be a good way to trim fat and cut waste, so.
All right. Thank you. Crystal?
Kind of going to go back with basically what most of us said, the audit seemed great. Obviously, we don't have eyes on that, or hands on it, but it seemed like it was great. It seems like what you guys are doing is great. When I was walking around and talking to people, everyone seemed very positive about the changes that are being made. There are some concerns with the Rick's Pharmacy issue, but really, just getting out there and talking to them, they kind of listened to my perspective on it, and then listened, I listened to their perspective on it, and essentially kind of went from it as being a person that's lived here my entire life, like, we've already answered this question, essentially, but that was really the only thing I heard about when I was walking around, was people are a little concerned, so maybe a little bit more transparency on that. It's, you guys have been transparent, though, if you come to meetings, but not everyone does, not everyone can, and not everyone wants to do the research to get there. But maybe just slightly, a little bit more transparency, but that would be it.
All right. Thank you. All right, kind of, I'll kind of wean ourselves out here, is there anybody have any other follow-up questions for the candidates?
Just one more on the sheet.
Palmer?
As a councilperson from Ward Three, you have an obligation to the people in your ward, but there's really no such thing as a Ward Three budget, or a Ward Three road use tax fund, or Ward Three industrial park, because those are community things. I say this because I really cannot think of one person outside of Glendale Park who wanted their road paved, and that was a very, to me, unpopular decision. When there are other roads in town that are crumbling that are more well-traveled. With that being said, what is your viewpoint on supporting other projects in other parts of Hampton?
Bill? Let's start that one out.
Frankly, Pat, Eric Councilman, Palmer.
I answered a lot more than that.
I, I knew your father from Kiwanis, so, anyway, I think you're being overly critical, and I think a lot of folks might be overly critical of the paving of the Glendale Park Road. I don't know if anybody in Glendale Park, and there's one sitting right here, whether we asked for that or not, I know that Doug has a plan for the city, and I have absolutely no idea how Glendale Park fell into that plan, but I'm sure he has a plan on who and where and what to take care of the streets for. Like was spoken earlier, you can't help that your streets are plowed just because you're a few doors down from Ron. I don't think that has anything to do with it, I would never accuse Ron of favoritism, so I don't think that's happening, and I think if, if people think that they're doing something special for Glendale, I don't, I don't think there's any truth to that, so I would just blow it off, because I, I'm sure, I, I have complete faith in the director of, what's your title, Doug?
Public Works.
Director of Public Works? I have, I have complete faith in Doug and Ron, in how the city is being managed. One of the fears about applying for this job was, are Ron and Doug going to stick around because they're doing an excellent job? And quite frankly, from my personal opinion, I think And quite frankly, from my personal opinion, I think he'd be hard pressed to replace either one of them. And they're a real asset to the city and that's why our city budget looks the way it does. So, anyway, I think it was just a random shot in the dark that Glendale got paving and the others didn't, but everybody's stern will come.
Justin?
Yes, yes, sir. Again, you have no obligation, you have an obligation to the people in your ward, but there's no such thing as a Ward Three budget, road use tax money, whatever. I say this because I cannot really think of one person outside of Glendale Park who wanted their road repaved and upgraded when other roads in town are crumbling. With that being said, what is your view on supporting projects in other parts of Hampton?
So, I think that, not knowing all that specifics of this issue, I would say that Hampton's not huge. And if there's one area in this ward that needs to be improved this time, then we improve that area. If there's another area in this ward that needs to be improved this time, we improve that area. We're not pork-barreling across the country here, but I think that if it improves the lives of those people in that neighborhood and they wanted it, then why not? You know, and we can afford it. And then you just move on to the other ward. And helping that ward out the next time around, we have the opportunity.
Thank you. Crystal?
I actually didn't have the privilege of living in Glendale Park when that happened. But I have heard some things. No, most recently, when I was walking around, I did obviously walk around my neighborhood first, why not start where you are most familiar? One of the families that lives there actually brought this up. And essentially, that people were not happy. I was unaware. I just like our street. I didn't know it was a big commotion. But essentially, I also don't know what the status of it was prior to, I wasn't driving around the circle before living here. I agree with Bill. I rest this in Doug's hands, I'm sure he made a great decision. And a decision that he, he knows what he's doing. Same with Ron. And, yeah. All jokes aside, I honestly, I don't know what the status of the road was prior to, I did not live there. But I think we're in good hands with who's in charge of these two things or this thing.
Jean?
I know that the city and Doug have a strategic plan for, certain things need to be addressed at certain times, in certain areas, certain wards. Every now and then, something comes up like a ruptured pipe. I thought there were several of them recently, that need to get bumped to the head of the list, that might move things down a little bit. But, yeah, I mean, whatever needs to be done in the areas where it's most needed is what needs to be done.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody's in good shape. All right. Well, I just wanted to say thanks, thanks again for all of you, four of you, showing up and giving, expressing interest in helping our community because, you know, we're doing okay, but we need help. We're always good for, we always like a new voice, you know, it doesn't, we don't hear them if we don't see them. So, I appreciate you guys coming. Just to want to mention that we will be making the appointment at the Thursday, March 27th council meeting. We ask that all of the applicants be present at the Thursday meeting as you'll be sworn in immediately following the appointment and will be serving as the Ward Three Councilman immediately. You'll get your chair and hit the ground, get the ground running. So, again, thank you, everybody, and I appreciate you coming in. And we'll wait to see you on Thursday. Thank you.
Very good.
Brings up our last agenda item.
Oh, God, we have to.
Barry. Rest room break.
We take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, go.
I'm getting a little red.
Shouldn't I drink all the water or?